Welcome everyone to the Town of Monroe Planning Board Meeting. Today is September 5th. Let's start the meeting with the Pledgeable Agents. My Pledgeable Agent, to the God of the United States of America and to the Lord for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
All.
What is... Oh, okay. Okay, so, the fire exits are where you all walked in, in the front entrance. Also down the hall, behind you, and then behind us as well, in this location. This is a workshop meeting. We only have one meeting this month because next Tuesday, our regular night, is primary day. And there is a primary at this location, so we were unable to hold our regular meeting. I guess that would be the 12th. So tonight is it for September. The first we have up is Kingdom Hall. Let's see if the representatives for Kingdom Hall come up. And just let us know who you are? And how you're related to the project?
My name is Richard Bovee, B-O-V-E-E. I'm the coordinating engineer for this project here in Monroe. A licensed engineer here in New York State since 1974.
Right, very good. Thank you. So, I don't know how do we want to proceed here. I see we've got your narrative, as well as we got the... You have DEC's response to our Notice of Intent. Let's see, we've got some plans. And Mark, I know you prepared a comment letter that you just handed out. I assume the applicant hasn't been able to see that yet.
No, I haven't.
I've got extras here if he wants them. I don't know where they just went. They were right here.
Those are the originals. I have chopped and filled it out.
Okay, great. Did you leave anything? Okay, great. All right. Okay. And Mark, your comment letters in response to the plans that we have in front of us now, correct?
Correct.
All right. Perhaps maybe it's wise that we have the applicant run through the changes he's made on the plans and the things that he has addressed, and then we can take your comments. Sound good?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, we brought a colored rendering tonight, so you have some idea what the vegetation looks like.
If you can tell me which plan you're looking at, because I can try to get it up on the screen as well.
This is a landscape plan that was colored in.
Okay. Let's see if I can figure out how to get it up there. Okay.
Gives you an idea of the amount of green area. The parking is in light gray, and then the building, of course, in a darker color. The sidewalks to the front and the sidewalks to the north will all be new. The set of stairs that are on the emergency exit for the auditorium, which is on the upper level, remain in place and will be added to such that it's down to the parking level. The handicap spaces will be modified, such as the cross slope. When you're exiting a car or a van, will be shallower, flatter, and will be a sidewalk immediately in front versus what has is there now. A person exiting a van has to go to the rear of the van, walk along the backs of the vehicles to enter the building. This way it'll be, they'll exit, go to the front of the vehicle on a sidewalk that will take them right to the front door. That's the major changes. The grading at the southern driveway is for the purpose of keeping the water that's on Harriman Road, Harriman Heights Road, that flows along Harriman Heights Road and down our driveway and has damaged a lot of the asphalt, will stay in front of the building, traverse across the front lawn to the northern driveway, and then exit both on the grass and through our parking lot, where it belongs. That's the primary objective of the project. Over the years, enough water has entered the foundation that the building, foundation drains don't function correctly, so the building basement has been wet. And we've corrected about a third of the foundation, and this project will correct the full perimeter with new foundation drain and new, not just damp proofing, but actual waterproofing on the foundation, everything below grade, to keep that basement dry. The parking lot, as soon as we get our geotechnical report, will tell us whether we can use it and replace in kind, cold in place milling, or we'll take it up and replace with new base and new top. Immediately it needs to be patched before the winter, because some places that the actual pavement is missing. The sidewalks will have adequate handrails for the steps. There's a set of stairs that comes to the front door from the north parking lot. And that's basically new, all new landscape, new sign faces, and the site lighting will be all LED. That's basically the work that's going to be done on the site. We're reducing the amount of pavement and yet increasing the number of parking spaces by laying out something that's more practical. Right now, there's 30,000 square feet of pavement, and when we're done, there'll be 26,800 square feet of pavement. So we're bringing back about 3,300 square feet of lawn next to the shed on the east side of the property. The drainage remains the same. The stormwater remains the same. I know there's a letter from DEC, and I responded to the board in regards to, they thought we were putting a new well, a new septic in.
Yeah.
That's because I checked off the two boxes in error. I still couldn't correct that form if I read it 20 times. But the bottom line is, the intent is to stay with the same well and stay with the same leach field. That's the intent. The building itself, inside, will have new interior finishes. Some of the finishes go back to the '60s and '70s. The bathrooms are modified in the '90s. They'll all be upgraded with handicap fixtures, even though they're there now, they comply with the new codes. And carpet, wall finishes. The exterior will have a new finish. We're getting rid of the stucco finish. It's very hard to repair correctly stucco, so it's going to have a hard cement board finish. That's the plan. Those drawings are being worked on as we speak. Does that help?
Yes. Before we go to Mark's comments, does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. This mentions that there's two apartments on the lower level.
Yes.
Are they occupied?
Right now, they're not occupied, but they have been up to, within, say, a few months ago.
Were they damaged by the water?
No, no. I think the water never got to the apartments, because the wall that is immediately wet was primarily for storage in a meeting room. And a set of stairs that allows access to the second, from the main level, to the basement, and that's where the water comes in. The block walls are just full of water. The water has stopped coming in, but the block walls are filled with water.
Are you seeking tenants? Like, if you're planning on doing the work, are they going to...
There'll be ministers who work in the area. They'll be not spaces for rent.
Oh, I see.
Will they be living there?
Yes. There'll be two studio apartments. It was already permitted, I don't know how many years ago, as part of the use of that building.
Would there be, if there is going to be somebody living there during the time that you will be doing work, is there going to be any accommodations? Will they...
They won't be there.
At the move? Or will... Oh, they won't? Okay.
When this work, the extent... This work is so extensive that the congregations will be relocated to other Kingdom Halls in the area. And anybody that would be in the apartments would be vacated, so we have access to the whole building, such that all the demolition, everything that has to come out, the adjustments in the floor for plumbing, realignment of tubs and toilets. You have to take out concrete.
It sounded like you wouldn't want to live there during this stuff.
No. They'll be completely vacated. It allows us to do it in a 10-week window. That's the goal, inside and out. And then the congregations and the individuals will return.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. Board Brower, Conservation Commission. Do you know anything about the history of your well? How far away from the road it is? What's the depth when we put in?
I don't know the depth, and I don't have the well log. It may be in the file, but I haven't asked for that.
Why I ask? Because you're at the bottom of Harriman Heights Hill. In the wintertime, there's a lot of sulk that's on that road and runs in there. It's doing a lot of good damage, and I also think it would suggest that the well quality be tested for us.
Okay, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, Mark, do you want to pull over your comments?
Sure. Richard has submitted a good set of plans to address the proposed improvements, and the scope of what's involved in this application is quite limited. It's an existing building, as he indicated. They're looking to fix some drainage problems, do so via modified grading, provide improved handicap access, which goes hand in hand with the grading that they're working on with the drainage. And then you could really call the pavement improvements a maintenance project that was just accelerated because of the poor conditions. So the plan does a good job of providing all the information that's required. Our comments are limited to some additional information we want added, just to make the plan that much more complete, for the record. And secondly, some minor corrections to details. We're looking to make sure that the zoning bulk information on the first sheet is complete based on 2017 code requirements, because again, they change over the years, so it's a good thing to have those on the plan in complete form. The balance of the comments really deal with some minor corrections to details and some dimensional issues, one being handicapped access. We're looking to have eight-foot parking spaces and eight-foot access aisles. It's a uniform requirement that we require their curb-to-curb dimension would actually remain the same, but just makes larger access aisles. That could be added to or adjusted on the plan. The detail needs some correction. I think the draftsman might have had an auto-dimension function in, and it shows like a one-foot, whatever, width striped area, but we all know that it was either five or eight, and he was just saying have it as eight. The handicap symbol, the state of New York has upgraded or updated the symbol, so we want to make sure that that's updated and that the new striping is put in. There's also a requirement for the "No Parking Anytime" signs in front of the access aisle, so we need to make sure that that's properly depicted, again, so that the contractor who does this work has as much help as possible to get it right. The drainage, piping, backfill detail just needs some additional information. We're pointing out some possible inconsistencies in the pavement construction detail. And last but not least, really, the only site plan addition, other than the correction of the dimensions for the handicap, is that the end spaces of the parking rows, where there's the 10, 10, 10, and 14, there's no backout room. You'd be backing out onto grass or dirt. We're suggesting a little bit of an offset in the pavement, so that you have room for the back wheels when you're backing out. Little bit of pavement back on, but they've returned so much grass, we'll sacrifice a little, so that we don't drive onto the grass and leave ruts and drag mud onto the pavement. Other than that, I think, given the limited scope of their application, I think these plans adequately address what they're proposing with the corrections that we're requesting.
Thank you very much.
Could you and Mark get a chance to look at the DEC letter?
I have not. I feel that I haven't got through my whole package yet.
Did you get a copy of that? You did?
I did, yes. That was the two things I picked up, was their comment on the well and the...
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a lot to get involved here in the fact that it's an existing parking lot with corrective work being performed. No new sanitary, no new well, no new disturbance areas that would be of concern for cultural resources. I just don't see any areas of concern when it's primarily a maintenance project.
There's not going to be additional tree removal, correct?
No, just our shrubbery in front.
Right.
Basically, there's no trees to come down. We're adding three that I will call trees and a lot of shrubbery in the landscape plan.
What kind of shrubbery and how big? Is that the landscape? No.
This is a test for a foundation engineer. Two eastern red bud, they're three to four-inch caliper. Dogwood, three to four-inch caliber. Red oak, three to four-inch. Thirty-five azaleas. And then all kinds of Allegheny spruce and creeping, that's the grass.
I'm sorry, these are trees that are being removed?
No, added.
Okay.
And no trees are coming down.
Okay. I mean, I'm just addressing the issue of the, you know, the state has noted that we've got the protected Indiana bat in the area. I presume that there's no tree removal. We don't really have much of an issue.
There's no issue.
Over on your, by your handicap parking?
Yep.
Your entrance coming in off of Harriman Heights Road?
Yes.
Is that going to be acceptable for two-way traffic there, or is it going to be designated as one-way?
It hasn't been designated. It has been used as two-way. I mean, primarily what happens there now is those that use the handicap spaces pull in and park immediately there. And the balance of the congregation pulls in on the northerly driveway.
Okay. So there's really not a lot of traffic going around the eastern side of your building over there?
There's very little traffic. It goes around the full perimeter of the building and exits onto Harriman Heights. That driveway's quite a bit steeper on that side of the road. The southerly driveway's quite a bit steeper.
So is there a problem in the wintertime when people come out onto Harriman Heights Road from your parking area?
No, because the lower driveway's not flat, but it's much flatter. The northern driveway is much flatter than the southerly driveway where the handicap spaces are. As Harriman Heights drops in elevation very quickly in front of the hall. In fact...
Which page are you on? Is it two? No, not based on my...
Visually, we're the low point of Harriman Heights Road at that location. And it's confirmed by a culvert that goes underneath and is just barely north of our northerly driveway. Goes under Harriman Heights Road. I think the survey plan is on Sheet 2. It's right on the cover sheet?
My pages are different than...
Yeah, I see the EKH pipe.
So winter exiting is very easy from the northerly driveway, because it's nearly a grade of the shoulder of Harriman Heights Road at that location. And the site distance is honestly much better at that location.
On the northerly, right.
The northern, yeah.
And post-road, I think, is right across the street from that.
Very nearly across the street, yes. Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's basically just... The drainage from your, once you finish your final grade on your blacktop?
Yes.
Is that going to be following the normal grade that you have now?
It will, and it's also intended to incorporate, because the effectiveness of the two drop inlets that are in the parking lot have been ineffective for years. The changes due to frost and the changes due to wear on the pavement, almost, the only water that hits those DI's right now are what rains on top of them. We plan to shape the parking lots such that those DI's will accept more water off the parking lot, and the rest will sheet flow off the back of the parking lot in the vicinity of the shed.
Shed. Oh, over here?
I saw it on one plan.
CG 101. It's the little box to the right.
Yeah, it's the little guy right here. You see it up there.
Okay, I was looking at a different sheet. So your outlet pipe?
Yes.
You say it's unknown over here?
Well, the surveyor said it was unknown, and it wasn't when he was there looking, but we've been able to dig it up and find it.
Okay, so if you go farther down from, I guess that would be... In a southerly direction, you start to enter a wetland area?
Yep.
And there may be a need to possibly riprap the unknown outlet pipe?
Okay, right now, there's a lot of debris that's right there, that's been there for, I don't know how many years. And even the 12-inch pipe, the 12-inch that comes down along, not quite along, but parallel to the property line on the northeast side, that outlet's right in that pile of debris that's there. And then the wetland is just, it's full of cattails and other grasses. That's what's there now.
I understand what's in there. It's just you may have different oils, different automobile fluids and things like that. We're not asking you to do a whole remediation on any type of discharge. What we're trying to do is just slow the water down from your pipe.
Okay, we can do that.
That's about it.
We'll make certain it gets into stone.
Because it's basically existing. You're not changing it.
No, we're not.
You're reducing the size of the surface area. So basically, as you move along with your equipment and machinery, requesting that you just put some riprap in there to slow the volume of water coming out of your culverts. Did you have somebody coring up in the parking lot last week?
I'll have to have.
Can you repeat that?
They had a geotech firm do the cores last week. I know it had been under contract, but I didn't realize they came last week. Yes.
And was there any results or any information that needs to be shared?
Do we have the result?
My name is Nicholas Saul, S-A-U-L, and I'm also an assistant to Mr. Bovee. The geotech report that was, or we haven't received the report back. It's due back in three weeks from the date of the drilling. The core samples were taken. So it was a week ago today that they took the samples.
Was there some concern over why you were quarrying in particular areas?
Now, what we're doing is, for us to optimize how we're going to rebuild the parking lot, we bring a firm in that will take the cores of the pavement, establish if, is there subbase there? Because in the '60s, there was some place that the gravel was good. That was best life got, and we paved right over it. But if there is subbase there, and we can work with some of the reclaiming companies in the area, they can cold in place reclaim, chopping the asphalt and the subbase in and give an improved subbase, and not haul anything away. If in fact, they use shale as subbase, that, the opposite is true. Because if you drag the shale into your hot mix, you've ruined what you're trying to improve. So... Pardon?
Into a man-made clay.
Yes. So we need to know that to know what section, I mean, the height, the thickness won't change, but what section we're going to put in there. Can we use what's there, improve the base, and then put binder and top on, or do we have to make room for new base, new subbase, new binder, and new top? And this report will tell us that. They also, we ask that, they do this on highways all the time, but that equipment wouldn't fit in that parking lot. So it's one thing to suggest something, but we want to know companies in the area that are going to do that work. There's no sense having a solution that no one has a piece of equipment to fit. So that's part of their responsibility, and that's what just got started with the cores.
Okay, great.
Just a question, would it be prudent to put a couple of wetland markers in that area, just to prevent whatever? The lower part of this is definitely wet. Not that these people are going to do anything, but it's always a good precaution. Well, it was, since they're back in, and when they came in initially, there was no this thing as local wetlands protection. So anything we do now will affect the wetlands. It's always had. And this is, as a precautionary measure, might be prudent to put a couple of markers in there.
Can you do that without it really being required?
Well, I'd have to look at the law. The wetlands are on the site, or they're all off?
They're all off.
They're off the site.
The documented wetlands are...
Their markers would be on somebody else's property.
I don't know how we would have authority to do that.
I don't know if they, you got a, well, the buffer is on this property.
Yeah, the buffer would go on to the...
So this is the problem I have.
Well, let's look at it as you go down the road.
Yeah, same.
If the buffer is here, we'll have to look at the law and see. We have been requiring the markers at the buffer.
Yeah, at the buffer.
At this point, we're working with a policy in any case.
Right.
So my question, I guess, as far as the markers. My question to the applicant is, do you object to putting in a couple, they look like highway markers, but they're brown, that just caution that beyond that point are regulated wetlands?
None whatsoever. Absolutely not.
So I would think that probably two wetland markers along the boundary of this property would just be good protection. And we could provide you with that information to add to the plans.
Thanks.
It's an easy solution.
Okay, so, Mike, you can add that.
Yeah. You did issue a notice of intent to the lead agency. No one has objected. I think you can note that your status finalized tonight. I believe Harriman Heights Road is a county road?
Yes.
If it is, then this has to go to the Orange County Department of Public Works, and it would have to be referred to the Orange County Planning Board.
Did we not do that? I thought we already did that.
I thought we got something from Mark.
We got a response to the lead agency designation.
Right.
And they said they look forward to the review under 239.
Okay.
But I don't know that I sent it yet. I think we didn't have plans that were in...
Oh, that's probably right. We were waiting for the plans to be revised. All right, so go through the steps again, so I can make a list, so I can make sure.
Number one, you are now the lead agency.
Yes.
Number two, this has to be sent to the Orange County Department of Public Works under 239F of the general municipal law. And it must go to the Orange County Planning Department under 239M. Within 10 days before the public hearing, I think it has to go to the Town of Blooming Grove, because I think their boundary line is located within 500 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I don't think Blooming Grove is, no. This would be just, Town of Monroe possibly, no, it wouldn't even be Village of Harriman.
Somehow I had that here.
Well, let's get clear. Are we sure?
I have a feeling my secretary copied the spreadsheet from the filing.
Harriman makes sense to me.
Yeah, but Village of Harriman stops almost a mile down the road.
Okay. So it won't need 239NN, it will need DPW, and it will need Orange County Planning Board.
Okay. All right, so we're DPW and Planning Department only. All right, and we don't have to worry about the neighboring municipalities, because we're outside of that. Okay.
Do you send those, or we send those?
We are supposed... We are supposed to.
We do the 239M, I don't know about the 239F, the DPW, do they require it from us as well?
Yeah, I can work.
I think they've changed us recently, didn't they?
Well, they've always wanted it from the municipalities, so I'll work with Noreen and get that sent over to them.
And I'll send you the 239M.
All right, anything else before we move on?
In touching base with Mike, this appears to have a mandatory public hearing, so I would believe that it's in good form, that with a couple corrections, which really you could have the public hearing with these plans, based on their completeness. But I would suggest the board authorize the public hearing and hold that possibly your next regular meeting.
Well, we have comments from the county back, and I'm sorry, I wasn't, my computer decided to shut down to update, so I was distracted. Do we want to wait for the county responses first, or no? I'm sorry, did you say?
I would suggest you call the public hearing, and if it happens that you have the responses before you conclude that public hearing, you might be able to take action.
Okay.
We'll work to get those sent out as quickly as possible.
Sorry.
So that would be October?
Uh, yes. We would have it at, we would have it at the regular.
So that's October 10th.
Yeah, but is that what we said, that we were going to try to do public hearings at the workshop, or at the regular?
Regular meeting.
I think the regular.
Yeah.
All right, so that gives everyone adequate time, actually, we might just hear from the county by then. Okay.
As long as the 30 days runs.
Yeah.
I don't think really the county DPW will have a lot of concern.
And what was that date, October what?
October 10th is the next meeting.
Okay.
The regular.
The regular meeting, all right.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing for October 10th.
One second.
Okay, call the question?
Aye.
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 Okay, we're going to, public meeting for 10:10. Okay, anything else? Nope?
Yeah, was this for 300 square feet or 500?
Talking about notices?
Yeah. Okay. I'll get a list from the assessor's office, and we have to do the mailing schedule, and I'll contact Cory soon if they're ready.
Thank you. Just a question on the changes that were required based on Mark's comment. We'll proceed with them, and then submit back to the town, or to you, Mark, or how?
Now, if you have any questions in the interim, rather than run all the prints and then ask the question, go ahead and get ahold of me. I'll get you the information on the markers. We're going to have some further discussions on that as a separate issue ourselves later on in the meeting. And I can always work with you on making sure everything's in pretty good form, and then submit formally to the town.
Okay.
The plan set that we have now will be what's sent to the county.
Yes.
Do you have enough? Okay, good. Okay, all right.
And the next set of plans will be due in by September 19th.
Okay.
Folded.
Yep, yep, do not roll. Sorry, new policy, rolled plans get sent back.
That's good to know, honestly.
Not accepting it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I folded them, I needed to know I couldn't accept them.
Thank you for your help.
All right.
And Rich, when we talk next, we can talk about the, in anticipation of an approval, getting an approval box and some project numbers on the plans.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Walmart. That's so funny.
Want me to hold it?
Too funny. That's ours, that's what that was. Okay, there we go, Walmart. All right, Leslie, when you're ready.
There we go. Good evening, I'm Rob Osterheld with Buller Engineering, good to be back in front of the board this evening. I have with me tonight Leslie Morrow with Harder, Seacrest, and Emery, counsel for the applicant. And wanted to just kind of step through where we are with the project. We had the workshop meeting beginning of August, and then had a follow-up site visit meeting with a few planning board members out on site, and Mr. Edsel from Aguihuazón etzal. And we talked through the application and the plans for the project. We since went back to the drawing board to address the concerns that were posed to us, and we've submitted revised plans. I think we were, you know, in hindsight, looking at the resubmission, the plan changes were really quite simple, to address a lot of the concerns that were raised. We had talked about concerns about icefall coming off of the building, we had talked about concerns with cars pulling up to the building and overhanging the curb line. And maybe introducing bollards there, and separations to the building, things like that. And essentially, what we wound up doing, again, a very simple approach, was to take the canopy and remove it from the area next to the building. And simply relocate it to where the existing grocery pickup stalls are located in the parking aisle, or in the parking lot. So, if it may... So again, looking at the aerial exhibit of the site, here's Walmart, here's Home Depot. We previously proposed the canopy over in this area, immediately adjacent to the building. Now we're simply saying that canopy's going to be up here in the parking spaces that are already earmarked for the grocery pickup. So again, looking at this plan that was submitted, here's the Walmart building, here's the Home Depot building. This is the existing hatched area out on the site that is not used for parking or anything, it's just a hatched area. And then the pickup stalls that are currently located out here in the lot. They will be modified to be widened, right now they're standard nine-by-18 stalls. They will be widened out to the 12 feet that are shown on our plans. So essentially, what will happen is we will lose three parking spaces. There's 11 there today, we'll reduce that down to eight. Six of those eight will be covered with a canopy, as we previously talked about. And in that area shown right here, the existing doorway, where the groceries would be brought out of the store, is right here. We would be adding a crosswalk, a new ramp off the curb here, into a crosswalk area, and then the canopy. Each parking space would be striped with a double stripe, they're 12 foot from center to center on each space. And at the entrance, or at the head of each parking space, would be a bollard with a sign. On that sign, as it's detailed in the plans, would be a number that the customer would call and say, I'm in space number one, or five, or three, or whatever number. And then the attendants would then bring the groceries out and load the car for them. So those were really the, you know, the principal changes that we made, and I think they really addressed the main issues that we were talking about. And the concerns that the board and Mr. Edsel had expressed to us. So with that, I know we need to probably address any questions you may have on that, we can do that, and then talk about next steps from there, if you'd like.
I cannot remember, did it turn out that that was a required fire zone, that hatch during?
It was not.
It was not, right? All right.
Based on some correspondence, email correspondence, I had with Ben.
Yeah. Okay, good, and we've eliminated my concern that anything's coming off of that small little roof over there, so that's good. I don't pretend to understand, Mark, did you get a chance to look at this packet? If you can go to page six.
It's of the narrative type?
Yep, yep, where they talk about the load for the canopy.
I did look at it, and it's something that, again, is part of my review with Ben, just for the record, Ben is not considering this an accessory structure. In his opinion, it's a site element, if the, if the planning board approves it as part of their site plan review, he would look at it as no different than a bus shelter or anything else. And it's something, as long as this board approves it as part of a site plan, he's going to process it as a structure to the effect that it's going to have to meet code. And again, he'll look at these structural calculations relative to having the proper wind load, snow load for this region, and so on. So, that's what this table is trying to indicate, is that these are in fact designed for specific areas of the country, and specific live, dead, and snow loads.
So that's some, so essentially, it's within the building inspector's purview to make sure that this design can handle our weather, not something that you would review?
That's 100% correct, and confirmed in Ben Maldonado's email of August 22nd.
Can I ask a question about the canopy? Simply because hurricanes are in the weather right now, is, if it is deemed not to meet certain standards, can it be removed? Let's say for a weather event such as a hurricane, or a blizzard, or something like that, and then reinstalled, instead of worrying about it flying off?
Is it, is it something like that, where it can be easily done?
It's a fabric canopy roof, steel framing members, but then a fabric canopy roof. I'm not sure the complications involved with removing that for a temporary condition like that. I know it can be obviously removed for maintenance, replacement, things like that. But my guess is that if there were a large storm event coming, they would simply prepare for that and plan to remove snow accordingly. You know, or if there were high winds, maybe they would take it down, maybe they would, you know, batten it down a little bit differently for something extreme.
How far is the canopy from Home Depot property line?
The canopy is going to be located in the parking stalls. No, we don't necessarily need setbacks for the canopy. So, the canopy is going to be located over the parking stalls that are closest to the building. So beyond those parking stalls, there's another 18 feet of parking. And then there is roughly another 27 to 28 feet to the fence line that runs along the Home Depot Garden Center. Exactly where that property line is in relation to that fence, I'm not sure if it's, you know, a foot inside, a foot outside, but it's generally right along that fence line, I believe.
And there's no...
So it's 40 some odd feet.
There's no additional parking for Home Depot between...
That's correct, the fence line comes right out to the drive aisle.
I don't, maybe I just didn't pick up on it, but was there a section in your narrative that talked about maintenance of the canopy?
I don't believe there was anything in there about maintenance, but I did speak to the store manager, the boots on the ground here, at this, you know, specific site, to find out how they would maintain the canopy. And I know there was a concern about snow storage, you know, or snowfall, or icefall off of the roof of the canopy. And he said he would employ a snow rake if he needed to, to remove snow and ice from the canopy, that's...
How high is this?
The canopy's nine feet at its lowest point.
Okay.
It's an arched canopy, so it's nine feet at its lowest point.
What do they, I mean, what do your sites normally do with snow that sits on top of the...
Exactly that, they use a snow rake for them.
So what's the highest point?
The highest point is, I want to say it's about 12 feet. 13. And we did, you know, look into other locations, I know there was a question about where there may be some other locations where canopies could be observed. Little over two hours away, probably, you know, would be the nearest one where there's actually an installed canopy. But it's also further north, you know, further into, you know, the snow zone, so, you know, again, similar situation where they would use snow rakes in that application. Glenville, New York, which is up in the Capitol District area. And then there's another under construction in East Green Bush, New York, which is, again, in the Capitol District area.
East what?
East Green Bush.
You need to, if you could revise your narrative to discuss periodic maintenance and how you'll be dealing with snow, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And Mark, do we have a comment letter in here?
Sure. The first comment is...
I'm sorry, before we get to that, Mark, did you see the county's reply?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
All right.
The county referral came back?
Yes, did you not get a copy?
I haven't seen that yet. Is that something you have an interest copy of?
So, Mark, and I don't know if you incorporated that into your...
I didn't, but I'll speak to it.
Okay.
Comment one in my comments reiterates Rob's presentation, they're going from 11 conventional spaces to eight wider spaces for the online grocery pickup. The scope really is limited to the canopy structure and restriping, directional signage, and some illuminated wall signs on the proposed on the building. I do note bold and underline that they did revise the layout from what you've seen previously, and the fact that they've moved it out to that first parking row. So that's kind of a key change that was meant to address some of the concerns the board had. They also have reduced the 11 set drawing sheets down to six sheets, to eliminate a lot of the information that really pertains to interior innovations and Ben's review. The next bullet, the only correction is, when I said I hadn't seen the narrative, it's because I hadn't found it in the package, and I did find it after I had made these comments. But I left them on only because these are some of the items we discussed out in the field. They have in fact given us in the narrative, the overall store hours, and the grocery pickup hours, which are proposed as eight to eight, in, on page two of the narrative. So they've given us those hours, they are giving us a generalization on the fact that the structure for the canopy is in fact intended. And will be submitted to comply with the necessary loading requirements for this region. That's something that Ben will dig into deeper before he issues the permit, and then ultimately the certificate of compliance. Rob just indicated the snow rake discussion that we had in the field, and that would seem to be a reasonable approach. And last but not least, a discussion about truck route, because we had a concern as to when the trucks came up and down this particular aisle. And if there was a potential for them to get snagged or hit the canopy. So, I don't know if you have any more to add, Rob, on the routing of trucks, if the staff manager explained that routing issue? If they in fact come down this row as a normal course?
So, I did talk to them about that, and looking at the site, the trucks circulate around the back here, the loading dock. That's at the same end of the building as the canopy that we're proposing, is back in parking from this direction. So what happens is these trucks circulate around, pull up here, and then back into these slots. So they do not use this access aisle here for drivers at all.
Head to the exit.
Tight turn right here, so those trucks would not be able to make that turn.
Probably go out that last row before Home Depot?
That's right, and then they either circulate out through here, and down through, or my guess is more prevalent would be to circulate back around Home Depot and out to the left here.
Is there any signage on truck route on exiting, or entrance?
I looked around the back of the Walmart, and I didn't see any signage. But in general, when we, or any other engineer lays out these larger, you know, regional shopping centers or retail centers. The main reason for having these perimeter drives is to keep that truck traffic separated from the vehicles that are, you know, the passenger vehicles that are using it. Because we don't like to mix those different forms of transportation.
A point of interest, about four years ago, I was taking an exchange back to Home Depot. And I'm running a Class 7 vehicle, and I was directed to go up through that corridor.
Yeah.
By people from Home Depot. And I did go up to it, it was nice, but I went through there.
In between the two, you mean?
Yes, so signage should be... So signage should be put in there to prevent that.
I think that's preferable. I don't know that, I don't know what the prior approval required, if they required any sort of route. You know, it occurs to me it may be a regular thing that the trucks unload at the dock and then turn and exit through the pathway between Walmart and Home Depot.
Yeah, I don't believe after making a trip around the entire facility during our field visit, that they would be able to pull from the loading docks and make a hard right and come down this row anyway.
It would be hard.
I don't believe they could do it, so it's unlikely they'll come down this row.
Agreed, that's what I was just going to say.
Yeah, I would think they would go straight out. And you were, and I'm sorry, you were delivering to where?
I was to Home Depot, to get in the back of Home Depot. One of the grounds guys directed me to go between these two buildings and then make a right rather than go all the way around Walmart.
Oh, on entrance?
When you say Class 7, is that a trailer?
No, it's tandem.
So you were directed to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Like a 12-yard dump?
Yep. Big enough to cause problems.
So you came in directly, and you came in and entered in between the two buildings?
Yes.
To go around the back of Home Depot?
I came around the back.
Just to clarify, I could understand where there are two drive aisles here. There's the one closest to Walmart, which is where we're proposing the canopy.
Right.
And then you've got the other one that's closer to Home Depot.
On the other side of the park, of the next parking spaces?
On the other side of the parking spaces, correct. And that's more of a through movement that doesn't have this very tight area in the back that would prevent a truck from making that right turn. So, you know, I could see a truck making it through there. I don't see trucks using this one because, for one, this access aisle right here doesn't line up with the drive aisle directly across and slumps it a little bit because of the island here. And then up here at the other end, you have that 90-degree turn that we have to do.
When you say trucks, you're talking about tractor trailers?
Correct, yes. Yeah, pickup truck or a box truck, different story, but nope.
Will cars be compelled to use that? I see what you're saying, the drive that the trucks would probably use is not the same that online grocery customers would use to get to the spaces for the canopy necessarily. But do we need to have signage to direct them to use the other?
Well, it all depends if you want to open up the discussion of the original site plan. Because really, what they're proposing has no effect on truck routes. Our concern really was, is the aisle that they're proposing, the OGP at, a route that would be problematic with truck traffic having a structure built over those parking spaces? And I think the answer to that specific question is no.
No, probably not.
All the other discussions really jump back outside of the scope of this application.
But if you wanted to have signs to assist shoppers come in, those are directional signs, they're exempt from the sign code. I think there's a limited number of them Ben would have to look at.
And that gets into the next bullet on my list. I just reiterate, and I just wondered if the folks from Walmart had any more discussions on the difference between pickup and OGP pickup? Because all the signs just say pickup. So if I'm picking up a TV, I'm going to pull into one of these spots. I don't know if that's the intent.
Yeah. The intent is, as Sarah Baker from HFA, the project architect, was at the original workshop meeting here with me beginning of August, she had mentioned that the intent is to ultimately combine the general pickup with the grocery pickup. So that's why the signage on the building just says pickup, it doesn't say grocery pickup.
So all pickup will be from that location?
Right. So ultimately, everything will be converted over to be picked up at this end of the building.
So this is really a long-term signage approach, so?
That's right, yeah. Rather than go through an iterative process.
Okay. So it's interim, it's just OGP, then it will ultimately be all pickup?
That's right.
Okay, so that, as long as that's the intent, that problem goes away. The sign issue, Ben indicated that he would, as well as reviewing the structure, he would review any signs that are proposed. And if they meet code, he will issue the permit. If they don't, and they need a variance, you know-
What Gary pointed out in discussion would be earlier is we should look at the secret findings to see how we handle signage. Was it on a overall basis? Was it on a store-by-store basis? And I do remember that issue came up, Ben. I'll pull out the findings and communicate to Ben and the board what I can find.
Thank you.
Okay.
Last but not least, I'm not quite sure, and it's something that we can just resolve as the plans move forward, is the sign schedule on A 2.0 versus those signs limited to this application. I want to make sure that we're only dealing with what's proposed on this application. I don't like having massive sign schedules that pertain to things other than what the board is considering with this application. So if that could be looked at, Rob, it would be helpful.
Okay. Yeah, we can clarify which is new. You know, I know there's an existing and a proposed, but yeah, there's a lot on that proposed schedule.
Well, the difficulty comes down into is we don't want to stamp a set of plans that may not 100% match the prior approval.
Sure.
And we don't want to play Where's Waldo and have to check every single part of the plans to see if it matches. So we'd rather have you just show us what you propose to add for this application and let the prior applications stand on their own.
Makes sense.
Okay. My next numbered comment just raises the issue of referrals as needed to planning and to adjoining municipalities. A comment regarding the standard approval boxes and the title blocks so that they're in a recognizable form when they're folded. Not in my comments would be the same as the prior application. I believe this has a mandatory public hearing. I think there's plenty of information on the plans that is adequate for purposes of a public hearing, so I would recommend that you make the referrals and authorize the public hearing.
I thought there wasn't a mandatory public hearing here.
That was my read of the town code is that it can be waived.
My reading of the town code is that the public hearing can be waived on the planning board's discretion.
I certainly would love to be corrected on that because it is a very limited application. So if we can consider a waiver, it would make sense on this one.
We did discuss that last time, that's correct.
That's right, yes.
Right, Mike, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, we did discuss it at the last meeting. We did check the code blank, I remember. I don't have that part of the file, but you do not, you can waive a public hearing if a mandate's set.
Okay, that's what I thought, and that's what we discussed briefly at the sidewalk, but we weren't prepared to make a motion at that time. I guess I need the feedback of board as to whether or not you feel that a public hearing is necessary here. Rich? Any reason in particular?
No, not particularly.
Okay, Lisa?
I think it's a pretty well-known location, so the public might want input, but it doesn't seem, to me, it doesn't seem that necessary.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, I agree with Lisa. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, Gary?
No, in this particular case, I don't think there's a need for a public hearing.
All right, yeah.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, yeah.
I agree. There's no need for a public hearing.
Okay. I tend to go that way as well. I, you know, I think that the issues just aren't all that complex here. We're not making that many changes. But let's flesh out the other issues, and if we, if something else comes up, we can always, I can always call the board again if you guys indicate, if I get a sense that, you know, you're feeling otherwise.
I do have a question about the other businesses that are in the area. And if their site plan, if they want to propose a site plan and they want to build something similar, you know, how do we control that and say what's good for one business is good for everybody else? Is this setting precedent?
On the waiver of the site plan, public hearing? And anything you do on, if there's identical facts later, you can't be inconsistent, but I think you always have discretion on the level of the amendment, how substantial it is, you know, as long as you differentiate.
What are factors that would normally be reviewed in determining whether a waiver is appropriate?
I don't think there's any. I'll try to bring up the language.
Yeah, I mean, and we can sort of run through those, because if we're setting precedent here, and we are, we always are, we can sort of run through them and create that record so that way we're on safer ground. It's a good point.
5719 says, 5919E, "The planning board may, when reviewing a site plan for a change from a permitted use to another permitted use in a particular district, waive the requirements for a public hearing." There's no criteria set for it.
Okay.
Again, given the scope of the overall complex and the limited amount of area that's impacted by this application and the limited number of spaces compared to the vast number of spaces on the site plan, clearly show that the order of magnitude of this application is a reminder.
Well, I'm inclined to agree with you on this, and I think that the site plan can absorb it easily.
That may not be the case on someone who comes in with a much smaller site where there might be more site dimensional constraints or more of an impact.
I mean, we're not losing-
Or a visual impact.
We're not losing an enormous amount of parking here.
No.
The visual impacts are not really changing other than the canopy.
It's between two structures that are much taller.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, we've sort of flushed out safety issues that we can identify, and I think we all feel comfortable that we address them.
I know there's a restaurant in that mall that has a pickup, and, you know, it doesn't have a roof on it, and so, you know-
Which restaurant?
I think it's Chili's.
Oh, right. That, yes, it does have a pickup, you're right. It does.
So they could possibly come in and want to get a roof for those two spots, which, you know, I don't necessarily wouldn't be opposed to it, but I could see the potential for all the restaurants in that malls picking up on this idea.
Okay. I can't think of, I mean, beyond the site not changing much and the safety issues really not, I mean, we haven't identified any major concern here. What else would be normal, what else have we been concerned about here?
But there's no impact on water.
Right, water sewer.
All those are staying the same.
Even the lighting is not really a big, oh, your issue on lighting, go ahead, yes.
When we looked at the canopy on-site, everything was basically, all your lighting, most of your lighting was attached to the building outside of some lighting underneath the canopy. Now you're moving the canopy out into, we'll call it 30 feet from the sidewalk, 30 feet from the building. Really, the only lighting you're going to have is from underneath the canopy. You're running till 8 o'clock at night during months of October through March.
So is it by moving it out, have we created a greater need for lighting?
Will there be a need for any extra lighting, especially when you're walking back and forth from the building to the canopy?
There are existing parking lot area lights out in that parking lot.
Where are they located?
I didn't see anything on the plan.
So there's one just off the, so here's the canopy, the shaded area. There's one right here, just off the end of the canopy, and that's where the electrical service for the canopy lights will be fed from. So there's one right there, and then-
Is there lighting on the side of the building?
There are some lights on the side of the building as well, yes.
There were bright though, I don't think they're really shut down.
So this is, the only one on that side, I believe. This is a four-headed fixture. So that casts quite an area of light in this area. So that's located right up in there. So there will be canopy lighting on the underside of that canopy to light up, you know, vehicles and the loading of those vehicles, and then the area lights would be maintained as they are today.
Was that drawing you just had up there, was that one in our packet tonight?
Yes.
Which one?
The one with the lighting.
Yeah, which drawing is it?
Okay, so that is drawing SP1. And if you look just off the upper part of the page, upper part of the canopy on that page, it says proposed point of electrical connection C sheet EC1.
Yeah, I don't have drawings here, so.
It's on the left side of the page?
Yes.
The way the plans are folded, it's on the top of the canopy row. You see a four-headed light fixture and a pole?
There's your light, maybe your canopy.
Yeah.
Down in this area, which is basically your entrance to the building.
Right, and it kind of bumps out there.
I don't see there's any other person, but maybe there's lighting down in this area where your intersection.
I think there was.
No, I don't see it over there.
No, I didn't see it.
As a survey.
Yeah.
Well, this is the corner of your sidewalk, this is your patio.
Well, it bumps out, remember, so.
Right, now this is patio. Here, you have lighting on the building. Remember, there's lighting here, lighting here, lighting here. And this is the drive through, where you drive, where you can drive into your slide. This is like the intersection.
Oh, thanks.
And then intersection over here. So my question is, is there going to be more lighting in this area since people are going to have all of them?
Particularly since where your existing light seems to be set back a bit to the side and behind the canopy, and at night, the benefit of that light might be blocked by the canopy for people walking across from the access door. You know, your canopy is kind of going to block the benefit of that light.
So this light is very tall relative to the canopy, so the canopy will not impact, you know, the throw of that light because that light is so much higher.
How much higher is it?
That's a pretty tall fixture. I'm guessing it's probably 35 to 40 feet tall, something in that range. Whereas we're talking about 14 feet tall to the highest point of the canopy, so it's quite a considerable difference. But again, the underside of this canopy would be lit, and the only people that would be walking to deliver to these vehicles would be coming out of this door on the side of the building that has a light as well. So this corridor would be lit for those people. There will be no parking here as it is today, so there won't be people walking from that area over here. And even if there were, there is lighting on the building here. And then this light would obviously throw light to these other stalls and beyond, and then light in the other direction would cover the other side.
What dissuades people from parking under the canopy, getting out of their cars and running into Walmart when their delivery doesn't come out as quick as they want?
Good question. I don't know that there really is anything that would dissuade them.
Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, at night, without a lighting plan, I can't tell how well-lit that area is. Is there really, is there a need here for a lighting plan, though? I'm really not familiar with lighting.
Well, I was out there the night that we had the, you know, site visit.
Yeah.
I know Mark, you know, took a tour around the facility. I stayed around, took a tour around the facility. I also stayed and measured, you know, everything up along the parking stalls in this area, the HVAC enclosure, the sidewalks and everything like that. And I was there well after dark. I had no problem reading a tape measure, you know, from eye height, which is five foot nine or so, down to the ground. There's plenty of light in that area.
We make sure that the sides of our buildings are protected, I mean, for employee safety purposes, so that, you know, the spaces, the alleyways, and the areas in between the two buildings would be adequately lit, but not in a fashion that's going to end up causing, you know, being non-dark-skies compliant.
I just want to figure, I mean, this, it was, parking is there now, and it had to have been lit for that purpose.
And I fully understand the relationship of a very tall four-headed fixture that casts a large area of lighting, and you're going to have a canopy that, sure, if there was no lighting associated with the canopy, you'd have a dark area. But I suspect that these parking garage LED lights are going to provide a much higher level of lighting under the canopy than what exists now. So you're virtually going to have a hotspot, which is what they want, because they're going to be loading cars.
Sure.
And then the remaining area would probably have the same lighting as what it has now. And whatever loss you have for the shadow on the lower end of the canopy will probably be made up by the spill-out from underneath the canopy with the LED lighting. So I don't think lighting is an issue.
All right. Do we need to make a motion to waive the requirement of a public hearing?
I think you should, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, wait.
To waive the requirement of the public hearing, a motion to waive the requirement?
If I could just make a note, I mean, I think that all the topics that you've discussed, you know, visual impacts, lighting, snow, you know, snow safety are, you know, really good review factors when you're considering waiving a public hearing. I think that you really hit the issues that one would want to consider before undertaking a waiver.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking about, I mean, I think Walmart is hitting upon something that could become popular. This is the first of its kind in this town, and I think, you know, this is fine, I'm comfortable with what is being proposed, but I think- I think, uh, this will be somewhat of a pilot case, and we'll want to formulate some policies, some review policies, and some basis for either waiving a public hearing or, you know, design criteria that we want to see met for this type of structure.
The, the only thing I'm thinking is that Home Depot hasn't really been heard on the application and how it might affect them, and I don't, I don't know, and without a public hearing, they don't, um...
I don't even know if they have fee ownership of their parcel, and they'd be entitled to mail it, they may not.
Yeah, I don't know either.
And given the scope of your review to date, I don't know that there are any potential impacts to Home Depot.
No, if, if Home Depot felt that it was, um, some type of impact that, you know, we're not thinking about, or they want to put up a structure, now that location can no longer be used because...
Could always write them a letter or call their manager and ask them if they, you're not gonna take action tonight, ask them to come to the next meeting and see if they had any concerns.
Yeah.
That's not, that doesn't require a public...
This, this doesn't encroach on Home Depot's property, nor does it obstruct or block any access to their property, it's a, it's an improvement wholly contained within Walmart's operating area.
And forty some odd feet or so from that common property line, as we talked about earlier.
There's quite a difference.
No, I would have, yeah, I mean, it would be nice, I mean, if they, they got a nod from Home Depot that they're okay, I'd feel better, but I don't, I mean, if we're gonna require them to make a comment, then, then I would say we should open up to the public for a comment, and I don't see that need.
I don't know that we require them, we can give them a heads up that, um, that this is before us, and if they want to be heard, they should show up at a meeting, um, but, um, I don't, I don't know, in my, I think in my opinion, I don't know that we have to have a public hearing because of it, I don't know that it's necessary, that's my feeling.
Why doesn't somebody then move to waive the hearing and have a vote?
Okay, anyway, wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion to waive the public hearing.
Okay, anyone second?
I'll second.
All right, Rich?
Yes?
Aye.
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 Yep.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, because the public hearing has been waived, there's no requirement that this be sent to Woodbury, because that requirement of that notice is tied only to public hearing. It has already gone to the Orange County Planning Department, they've reported vocal. So all you have left to do is close out SECPRA and attend to whatever outstanding details there are, if you'd like, I'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting.
And relative to, you asked for input relative to the county planning's response, county planning commented advisory on the signage, and outside signage will be reviewed by code enforcement officer, directional signage, uh, that is permitted by the code will be treated separately from the signage that may be added to the structure, and if it meets the code, Ben will issue the appropriate permit.
Okay.
And we had also, um, spoke at the August first workshop meeting about SECPRA, and I believe the consensus was that everyone agreed that we were a type-two exempt, um, SECPRA action, that we were under 4,000 square feet, um, there were no, no other thresholds that, you know, pulled us out of a type-two.
Mike, you can confirm that?
Again, I don't have my notes, but now that you say that, I remember we had that discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so, so Mike, please just confirm that and make sure.
Well, it's under 4,000 square feet, so there's no structure that has decided that maybe that it's under 4,000.
The canopy itself, yes.
So it's a type-two.
Okay. All right, so what else do we need to do, anything? Other than you're gonna prepare the resolution?
Right.
And circulate it, um, and we should be able to move on that at our, we can review it at our workshop and move on it at our regular, if all is well. Mike, you have, Mark, you have nothing left?
No, I have nothing left, and, uh, I think procedurally, we've heard back from the county, so there's really no open issues.
No.
Well, you're gonna revise your narrative?
Yes.
But it was a minimal revision, so, all right.
And is the regular meeting on the 10th October, did I hear?
Yes.
Okay, great, yep.
We're gonna do the workshop then.
We'll review the resolution at the workshop?
And then have...
And then, and, and, and you, I don't think you'd really have to be there at the regular meeting if the workshop goes well, and all we're doing is passing the resolution, um, I would, I would think, but that would be entirely up to you.
When is the workshop?
The third, so we'll have, we'll have the draft resolution by that time, we can review it with council at the workshop, any remaining issues will be discussed at that time, and then if we're all good to go...
The couple cleanups that I spoke with Rob about, I'll work with him between now and the third.
And your deadlines to get those cleaned up, I am, if it's revised, the narrative, any plans, would be the 19th, is that right, Noreen?
Yes.
September 19th, that would be the deadline.
I was just relieved to hear that the October 19th meeting wasn't happening, 'cause that's my 50th birthday, and I'm kinda like, if I didn't get an OGP for my birthday, that would be a bummer.
Can do, my brother.
That'd be exciting.
Have to make a phone call.
Type-two, no SECPRA necessary.
Yeah, okay, great, good, good, okay, all right, so I think you're, you're good, any other questions for us?
No, I think we've covered everything, and, uh, thank you for your time tonight, we'll look forward to seeing you on the third.
Good, thank you.
Have a great night.
Good night.
All right, the next is All Mine. Is, uh, Noreen, is Mine Road, is that, is that All Mine?
Yes.
Okay. Bear with me here, why don't you let us know who you are?
Good evening, uh, my name is Jay Samuelson, I'm a principal at Engineering Surveying Properties, with me is Keith Woodruff, one of my staff engineers, um, so we're here to talk about the All Mine subdivision tonight.
Do you have, um, business cards?
I do.
That would be helpful for, um, Noreen, our planning board secretary.
I'll give them to her when we're done.
Great. All right, so, tell us all about the project.
So Mine Road subdivision was a project that was before you, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, um, uh, with the same applicant, um, it had received preliminary approval, there was some well testing that was determined to be contaminated, there were some lawsuits that were pursued over the past fifteen years or so, um, and there's been agreed upon stipulation between the town and the applicant to move forward with a 62-lot subdivision, application for a 62-lot subdivision with, um, public sewer and creation of a water district for this property with, uh, with the intent to obtain water service from the village of Monroe. So we are here tonight to show the, the project for the very first time, um, to start moving through the SECPRA process, um, see what additional studies the board is looking for, uh, so we can move forward with the subdivision.
Okay. All right, so I know you've been here before, but recognized, none of our members actually were on the board before, I don't think, at least, is that right?
And has the engineer personally been before the board before, or do you...
Yeah, I was here back in 1999 for this project under a different firm, so...
Okay, well, that's good, at least there's consistency there, right? All right.
Where does your entrance onto, uh, uh, Lakes Road actually come out? I see your, your map is too clear here.
We, uh, we have, um, this is just a, a schematic touch we have at this point in time, the boundary is an actual boundary done by a land surveyor, the topographic information you see is from available mapping from New York State, which we will verify and update when we do an actual survey, but if you go out there on Lakes Road, you will see that there is an old dirt road, access road that comes up the side of the mountain, and that's where we're gonna continue to utilize that entrance.
Is there any kind of landmarks there, buildings, whatever, outside of just a dirt road?
Off the top of my head, I do not remember, but I can definitely get you that information.
Can you give us an idea, like, whereabouts?
It's been a while since I've been out there, um...
It's only since 1999.
Only since 1999, so, there might have been a few changes since then in that area, but, but we'll get you some landmarks for...
Well, you know what, we're gonna need a sidewalk anyway.
Okay.
So, um, and we should do that before the weather gets bad, so, um, and by that, I mean, cold.
The location map might give you a rough idea where that connection is.
Yeah, it's too rough for me, I think...
Not so good.
Our, our, uh, our little hatched area is off by a little bit somehow, it seems it got shifted during the drafting of it, but, um, you have to name it over Cross Street?
It's between Mac Place and Hillside Terrace.
So I guess Mac Place is gonna be closer to the lake?
Correct.
And Hillside Terrace is away from the lake?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you can still see the entrance route, I mean, it's visible?
Uh, it may be overgrown with some brush, but yes, you can definitely make it out as you go out there.
If it's the one I'm thinking of, it's awful steep.
It is very steep.
It's the one with the rock wall along it.
Yes, and it's a big, that's...
Oh, yes, that's steep.
Where, where are we as far as road specs, as far as grade, maximum grade on the road?
The towns.
There's...
Ten percent?
There's a new road spec, and this is gonna be a challenge.
Oh, yeah, okay, now I know where it is, okay, I know where it is.
It's, it's, as, as was indicated by Jay, it's a, it's a concept line, they've got a lot more to provide.
Has village water been secured?
No, no, we're still waiting to hear back from the vote. There are a number of other agencies that have approval authority, and as indicated, SECPRA is something that needs to be examined, I suggest that you issue a notice of intent. I think this is unlisted, it doesn't exceed any type-one threshold.
I'm sorry, Mike, say that all again, I missed you.
Um, SECPRA is the first order of business, there are a number of agencies, therefore we need to send out a notice of intent to B lead agency, and I recommend that you do that.
All right, we need to...
Yes.
All right, make a motion to, uh, send out, to B lead agency and send out a notice of intent. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, Anthony?
Aye.
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 And Mike, you'll work on that with Noreen?
Yes.
Um, okay, Mike, one thing I wanted to call to your attention in the application, the, in your packet, I don't know if you got a chance to look at the, um, project opening form?
Yes, they indicated the year, and that's part of the stipulation, you're talking about the amounts?
Yes, uh...
The stipulation requires that this be reviewed under the code as it existed in 2005, so the...
Okay, so, so for the escrow amounts, they would be per that, per that, and, and you confirm that that's what, 'cause I don't have that information.
I didn't think of that at, at the time, but since we agreed to that, and it is in the zoning chapter, then I believe we're bound by it.
Okay, yeah, I just don't know, were those the numbers back then?
Oh, that I don't know, I, Ross referred to a particular local law by date, I can verify that.
Yeah, can you verify that, 'cause I, I don't have that information, so I have no way of confirming that this is accurate.
All right.
Um, or whether the code at the time has the provision that allows the chair to require more or less?
Okay.
Please confirm that as well, I, I, as I sit here now, I don't know that 7,200 as an escrow isn't adequate, you know, I don't know that I would require more, but I'd like to know whether or not the, the code at that time gives the chair that authority, all right? Yeah.
Uh, from the Conservation Commission, I do have a question, I remember, none of you were here in 99, but I was in the audience, uh, you remember when they did the well testing, they didn't quite have the adequate amount of water, and I'm curious how the water or what it was contaminated with, and purely an environmental concern, what's the source of the contamination?
Two, two things, one is it was sodium, number two is they did find one large gusher well, which would have supplied all of the lots in the subdivision, but it too was contaminated with sodium, but you're right, the initial well test, very poor yields.
And they did a full, they, do you, I don't remember the details on, on the endurance of those tests, that last one, 72-hour and 96-hour?
I, I, I don't remember.
All of that will be reviewed again, though, as part of our review, correct?
It's not needed, it's a public water supplier.
Oh, right, okay, so we don't have to worry about that, and that was the whole point, um...
Well, we may have to worry about it because of this contamina, a source of contamination, if this well is contaminated, maybe other areas may also be contaminated, so I'm just bringing this up as a point of interest and should be explored.
When they find a well that's contaminated like that, do they have an obligation to do some remediation, even if they're not gonna be using it?
No, no.
Hmm. Where were the wells located? Are they, are they marked to the...
They're not shown on this plan, no, we can, we can show you where they are, but they're not on this one.
Okay, um, yeah, could you, uh, show us on the plans?
How far along do these plans actually get? I mean, you're showing us a conceptual plan tonight?
We're showing you a conceptual plan, my recollection is, if you look at the plans that we have laid out here today, um, lots one through 21, and then there was two additional lots that went in the area of where, um, one of our cul-de-sacs, lot 29 and 30 were, there was, it was 22 or 23 lots that I believe had gotten to preliminary approval.
Yes.
So up to lot number 30?
So, yeah, it was the air, it was the, the, the long cul-de-sac coming in off of Mine Road, with the cul-de-sac to the left, and it was lots one, at one through 23 that was in the area of 21 and through, uh, 30, that was the original plan back in 1999.
So once you get down past 55, 56, that was not...
That was not part of the original application.
Okay.
It was part of the original property, but it wasn't part of the original, uh, subdivision.
I'm sorry, you cut off there.
That was part of the original, it's part of the original property, this wasn't part of the original application.
Right.
Now, um, that's gonna come off of Hillside?
Yes.
Road, is there any attachment, it almost doesn't even look like it's part of the same development?
Uh, there won't be any attachment to the other parts of this development, no, it'll just be an extension of Hillside Drive.
And now, does Hillside have a private wells, didn't they have an issue with water in that area?
Yes, they did.
Do they?
They may, but we will extend water out to them from, from our development, we'll get water out to the homes that we're proposing.
So the homes that you're proposing will not hook up to the Hillside Road?
If they're on private wells, no, there is no water out there.
No, I didn't think it was private wells over there.
That I don't know.
No. I thought the town of Monroe was, um, helping these people that had the water issues over there, on Hillside, I'm sorry.
Say that again, Lisa?
I just thought that the people on Hillside had some water issues that the town of Monroe were helping them with, the 22 homes in that area?
There's a water district that's formed, but there was still stuff that the town was working on, um, I don't think it's, um, officially up and running.
So, so they're in the process of addressing a water district in the area?
Right, but I think the problem is that water district doesn't have enough water to supply additional homes.
So how many people over there are on wells?
I don't know that number.
Hmm.
I have a question, you said the wells were contaminated, but now there's reverse osmosis that would, we had another applicant that was using that, uh, you're shaking your head, you, you've thought about that, I'm sure.
I, I've thought about it, we've talked about it, but this is the route that the town and the applicant have agreed upon to proceed in.
Okay, thank you.
Could you explain the reverse osmosis, what did you mean?
There's a process with using membranes that takes out the impurities from the water, kinda like a, a water filtration system, uh, but I guess that's not part of the settlement, so it's not gonna be pursued, thank you.
I'm, I'm, what I'm reading between the lines here is that to the extent that there's water contamination in the area from sodium, it's not going to be this applicant's responsibility to do anything about it.
It's an irrelevant concern for this applicant.
It's an irrelevant concern, okay.
Does the village boundary run close to this property, do you have a dash on this map?
Does the village boundary run close to this property? Do you have a dash on this map? I believe it does.
Jay, how close is the village boundary?
At the top of my head, I don't know, but I know it is relatively close. We're not far away.
A portion of Hillside Road, isn't that in the votes and also Mine Road?
I believe a portion of Hillside.
Can you show those, the village boundary on your location map?
Well, yes.
It's important because that might trigger a need for referral to the Orange County Planning Department and to the village before the public hearing. Mine Road is a town road, so there's no county roads.
Lake Road is county road.
Okay, so it's going to go to the Orange County Planning Department anyway. The question whether it would need to go to the village before.
Well, it's going to have to the village, so it's going to be part of the village water, so as part of the hearing.
Yeah, but I meant the official 10 days before the public hearing notice to the village clerk.
So we're not sure if it has to go to the village for that purpose?
But we have plenty of time because we're a long way from the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And there may be some MS4 boundaries.
There's going to be a SWIP on this one for sure.
Any other questions before we turn to Mike's comments? Mark's comments?
It's going to take some time.
Yeah. Mark, you want to go through your comments?
Yeah, Sean had taken a quick look at this. Obviously, there's the potential for a lot more comments, but we really didn't get deep into the plans because, again, it's their first appearance. And there's certainly going to be a lot more information developed by Jay's firm and brought to subsequent appearances. There is some concern, first off, we're going to need a surveyor is going to have to be on board. We need to have that occur early on so that we can understand the actual computed lot areas and frontages and lot widths and everything else to make sure that the lots meet zoning. I've got to catch up to these guys to the extent that we have to. I'm presuming that these zoning bulk values are based on the old code.
From the old code, yes, the 2005.
So they weren't cluster lots, they were just code lots? So these are very small lots. So it's going to be a trick for them when it comes to grading, which leads into my third comment. There's a lot of grading that's occurring. If you look at the second and third sheet, a lot of grading occurring along the road right of ways. Many times, a fairly good portion of the lot has grading just to get the road constructed. And we still have to go through the town road code, the town road spec and the code to make sure that the roads can be constructed in accordance with the current code. All those things with small lots and steep slopes are going to make this a real challenge for these guys. So I suspect that we're probably not going to see them for a while while they're straightening out the grading, because it's going to be a tricky one. It also, in some cases, may compromise access to the actual residences. So we have to be cognizant of driveway slopes. They could get creative and have driveway pads that have stairs leading to the houses or low entryways. So they're going to be almost site-specific designs for each lot, or a lot of the lots, just to make them functional. So this will probably require more detailed review of grading and lot configuration and lot grading than what you're used to. But it's not-
No, I fully understand.
It's not uncommon when you have this type of steep slope subdivision with this configuration. So we'll deal with that in due time. Obviously, roadway details, profiles for the roads, the utilities, the details, and a SWIP are all part of the package we're going to ultimately need to receive. That will come down the road. I'm presuming that this is going to be a phased subdivision. Are they going to build this all in one shot?
No, I'm sure it'll be phased.
So that's going to be important to understand how they're going to construct this and what phasing and the phasing has to be integrated to the SWIP. I'm also seeing a cul-de-sac by lot 11, 12, 13, 14 that would appear to be a temporary cul-de-sac. So that should be called out as such, because I've been in some recent battles where neighbors all of a sudden thought that they're not going to lose the cul-de-sac, that that's going to become their auxiliary parking spaces, and then the town has to worry about trying to plow a cul-de-sac in the middle of a road. So you want to make sure that if that's in fact a temporary cul-de-sac, you call it out as such. And the rest of them are all what appear to be true cul-de-sacs. And I'll be spending some quality time with our highway superintendent as Jay develops more detailed plans. Other than that, again, it's their first appearance, and I need to catch up with Mike on what's in the stipulation so we can make sure that there's, everything falls into place, and we'll be working with the applicant.
I just have one question on that. Just along the lines with the stipulation and the zoning from 2005, does that apply to the road specs as well?
Different chapter.
Different chapter. Okay, just confirming that. I didn't think so, but I just wanted to confirm.
So road specs are current?
Get it on the record that it's going to be current road specs.
The road specs are chapter A63 in the appendix, and the stipulation only grandfathered the zoning chapter provision, so the new highway road specs apply.
Good question. Can you access the subdivision from Route 17M? 17M, Lakes Road. Pardon me, I'm sorry, Lakes Road.
Yes, Lakes Road, that's where we're talking about before.
That's out by lot 45 and-
I'm just looking at the small little-
That's the entrance we were talking about before.
Yeah, that's the entrance we were talking about on Lakes Road up by lots 45 and 62.
And then it would be accessed from Mine Road as well?
From Mine Road as well, yeah.
Is there a monument? Like which end would the monument be on or the sign for that?
We don't know yet. Probably both for subdivision sign, but we don't have that defined yet, but we'll make sure that we know which one.
So all that connects then from Lakes Road and go all the way through to Mine?
Yeah, so we'll be a connection straight through, yeah.
Except for those couple of homes on Hillside?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Something I was thinking about with the water contamination, and this is really a more an issue, I guess, for Mark. Given the steep slopes here, you know, drainage, what I don't want to have is if we, since we already know we've got a groundwater issue here, you know, water flows downhill, and if this applicant isn't required to remediate or fix the problem, we've got sodium-filled water flowing downhill, so drainage becomes an issue to me. I don't know how it affects neighboring properties.
Have to look into it a little bit, give it some thought.
Yeah, so just keep it something-
You know, what might be well contamination, subsurface may not be the same condition on the surface, or it could be worse on the surface.
Or it could be worse.
So we'll have to give that some consideration.
Yeah. So we need a site inspection. I don't know when, or sidewalk. I don't know when that's appropriated. Mark, you think we have, the plans are enough that we can do that, or if we need-
I think the surveyor needs to precisely locate the entrances, because I think that's one of your concerns.
I want that first to be-
You want that done, and, you know, for purposes of a sidewalk, you could really, the first sheet would be enough to understand the concept. But I would think they want to make sure that the surveyor's on board, make sure that this lot configuration works, meets the old zoning code. That way, from a lot compliance standpoint, we know it's the configuration. I would hate to see you have to go out twice because they find out when they look at the roads, that the road slopes don't work, and they need to move roads and shift roads and change configurations. So I think the sidewalk really should be after they've made an evaluation of the road compliance and the individual lots' compliance with zoning. At that point, the general layout would seem to be not nailed in, but at least would have some validity.
What's your timetable on getting that done?
We're looking probably back. We're hoping to get some revised grading based upon those, the new road specs, and I'll be back by October meeting. I'm not so sure if I can make the September 19 submission you said, so probably November is what we're looking at, which gets us closer to that.
Well, these will be done. I'll make that, that'll be easier. Let's hope for a warm day.
And when we do do it, we can, we'll stake out the entrances, we'll put a couple stakes in the cul-de-sac, so we've got some points to walk along and navigate, and we can see where we are when we're out there.
That would help.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the members? Mark, any other issues you want to discuss?
No, not at this point.
Okay, applicant, do you have any questions for us?
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, thanks for coming in.
The information, the meeting in November is October 24th, and there's only one meeting in November, and that's November 14.
Thank you.
I don't think so. I will have to check that. I don't think so. All right, I'm sorry. Okay, so Lark and Drive LLC is the next applicant on our agenda. Do you have a space for Leslie? Yeah, scoot right in.
Thank you. Okay, I had-
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, sorry.
Hold on. Okay, the applicant is here. Who is here for the applicant?
Michael Sandor, MJS Engineering. And I was here back in June 6th of this year. You had a public hearing, and it was a bunch of neighbors that came out and spoke for the project, or provided some additional comments. And the way we left off is the planner, Leslie, would revise the document to reflect those comments that were heard at that meeting, as well as some additional items, additional intersections. Leslie was kind enough to send this document to my office a few weeks ago, and again, this past, this past week. We've reviewed this document, the scoping document, and we basically are in agreement with the outline as in this document for the work necessary to complete the draft environmental impact statement.
So you have no further changes to the draft scope as modified by Leslie?
No.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Leslie. Leslie Dodson, how are you?
Good, how are you? Right, there were several written comments that were submitted in addition to the oral comments that were made at the hearing, letters from owners of adjoining projects and adjoining properties. Some of the comments that had been received suggested a certain specific approach to the process that relied on listing best practices and standard mitigation measures. I honestly did not feel that this was necessary or advisable. I know that there are some people who do it, and it almost makes it so that the scope is a detailed outline of everything that they could possibly do to mitigate. I do not feel that that's necessary, because I feel that if we need to tell the applicant what standard mitigation measures are, then we might as well just write the whole thing for them. I do not know whether you have a no effect letter from Parks and Recreation, but I'm assuming, again, since that's addressed in here, that that's something that you will produce. I think that most of the scoping comments were addressed within the attached document. There were several just overall description changes that were made in order to address some of the procedural concerns that were raised. So some of the general scoping considerations sort of obviate the need for the recitation of all the best practices. I'm sure you've all studied this at great length. We added several intersections to the traffic study because those were, those were addressed in several of the comments. I did coordinate with your engineer with respect to some of the suggested drainage comments that were, that were made. And so these reflect input from the engineer. It does add something substantially to the alternatives, because that also speaks to some of the issues that might be raised under some of the proposed zoning.
And where are you referring?
Under the alternatives at the page 15 of 16. At least two alternatives should be included to evaluate a mix of uses allowed under the proposed zoning. And also, one or more alternatives involving a reduced scale of the project. There are also some sub-alternatives with respect to water and so forth, and considering some of the traffic analyses, including listing some of the other projects that are farther underway than I had realized at the time that the initial scope was created.
Regarding what, like what?
Vial Moshe Gardens.
Oh, the engine, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. So.
There is something I'd like to bring to the board's attention, and that is the proposed zoning in this light industrial section of the town code. The proposed zoning has dropped from this particular area, playgrounds and parks, medical arts buildings, as well as hotels. And as you know, we have a hotel proposed on this project. On July 31st, I, well, we wrote to the town board to bring that to their attention. So that's something that I'm hoping that the town board will consider when they finally adopt this revision to the zoning code.
On pages eight and nine of this with respect to land use and zoning, it does get into considerably more detail and speaks to the fact that, to the extent that the proposed zoning amendments differ from the existing zoning at the, as of the adoption date of the scope, I'm suggesting that that be addressed, because I was aware of the fact that it did not include hotels.
Page eight is where you're-
Page eight and nine, it continues on, all the redlining. And I suggested including alternatives, not just for the hotel and the retail components, but also consider one or more alternatives to the office components. I mean, I certainly, in other municipalities in this area, we're finding that office space is not in extensive demand. And so I'm thinking that it would be useful for them in terms of marketing to realize that- to realize that if, if you're not able to market the office space, you may want some alternatives. And we also suggested addressing in greater detail some of the hotel components, assuming that a hotel may still be allowed. But this, this covers several different alternatives within this section.
Do you have any, um, questions for Leslie?
No, actually, I don't.
Okay.
I'm hoping that, uh, when I leave tonight, that this document would be, uh, accepted by the board, and then I can start doing an awful lot of work to answer these.
Mike and Mark, do you have any comments on the draft scope as revised by Leslie?
No, I spoke with Leslie as we come through the process.
Okay. Right, and the board? Is there anything you feel like, from your notes, that you feel that she's missed, or were not included?
No, Leslie did a good job.
Yeah.
Again, I just want to reiterate, traffic is a real major issue in this project. I shouldn't say this project, but the combination of all the projects going on in that quarter right now is, is going to be a nightmare.
We, we plan to have a very, very good traffic consultant address those comments.
Well, our traffic consultant's working on that now, and we're running into some problems already. Not with your project, but with traffic flow on others. So this is going to compound severely, so keep that in mind.
We understand that.
All right. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Uh, just touching on that hotel, hotel, whatever. I was reading something where now you want to put in some type of, uh, catering?
Banquet hall.
Banquet hall?
Yeah, there's a small amount of catering. I think, uh, I think I said 90 seats or something like that. It was in the, uh, it's, it's not a, a big banquet type of, uh, because you've got to remember, we're limited by the water that we are able to provide this project.
Right now...
And that's what we're...
If I recall, there was some kind of banquet situation going on across the street?
Yes.
Uh, already there's competition in the area, central competition in the area.
And what was that?
At the Lark and Drive Schools, Ashari Torah across the way, right across the street.
In the boys' school, they have a anticipated use of a banquet facility within the structure.
It's not approved, um, but they, they hope to return to our board in the very near future to proceed with that application.
Yeah, I know that, I know that the private schools do have those type of facilities in them. But we'll look into that, see how that affects.
We're just giving you a heads up.
Sure.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, to approve the scoping, amended scoping outline that Leslie just presented and to issue it.
So moved. Anyone want to second that? Rich?
Hi. I haven't really gotten a chance to look at this.
Okay, you want to take a second? It was circulated a while ago. Did we, did we send it to all the, did we send it to all the, the board members at the time? Okay, I just want to make sure.
I didn't resend it the second time.
No, the last week, the last, the last meeting.
Okay, all right, good.
I'll say aye.
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 Okay, that's what you guys said. Leslie, did you, I don't remember.
I said I was going to abstain.
Oh, okay, very good. I think it's the one you had in your packet the last time because we, we had to push it. Oh, she, yeah, that's true, she might have, but I know it was circulated by email as well. Okay.
I didn't read all of it, but what I see is...
Okay, um, so that's, all eyes except please. All right.
All right, the only thing I'd say is, Leslie, can you maybe just give me a, a date or something on this? I don't have a date on this. Maybe just send me the official, and then the board will have a record of that as well. But I know I got this a few days from...
Yeah, I'll send one that's not...
Draft, July 11th was the email.
All right.
No, but if Leslie sends everybody a new copy dated tonight, as the copy used to go to the board on this date, that way everybody will have the final word.
No red lines. Clean version marked as, you know, draft dated, whatever.
Tonight.
September 5th.
That works.
Okay, great. All right, any other matters that we have to take care of tonight for this project, Mike?
No, I think that's really the only thing.
Thank you very much.
Mike, do you have anything?
No.
Nope, okay. Any other questions, everyone? Nope, okay, good.
I'll see you next time.
You're free to go. All right. Okay, moving on. Administrative section. Minutes. So in your packets, you should have, uh, the June 6th? Okay. Okay.
And then 7-2-7? That's yours. Are we doing them? Because I went back to the digital version, which we need four years to change for, and it's all in different order, so I was trying to make sense that everything looks... Remember the one page, kind of paragraph that just started in the middle of nowhere?
Uh, yeah, is that where we left it off?
Yeah, so I was trying to get it to fit in the right spot, and so I'm re-watching that video.
Okay.
The right paragraph, so that will not be...
So June 6th, um...
We worked on very hard by order.
So, so review that. Everyone's got that in the packets. And, and I might even, well, let's see how we're, we're doing here. What time is it? It's nine o'clock. We're doing pretty well. I might come, come back to this and say, hey, look, if we can get through everything else in the administrative agenda, maybe we take five minutes, everyone can read this, and we can approve these. But let's see how we do. Uh, if not, we'll have to do it the next time. But remember, we don't have another September meeting, so, um, you know, I'd like to back them out, but we'll see. Okay, discussion of the application procedures. So I just need a report from Mike and Mark, how you're doing on...
I took, I took two weeks off for vacation, and Mark took one, and...
Good point.
We didn't get much done in the only other week that remained, so we'll have to pass.
Okay, all right. Um, the wetland marker policy, I know that Mary had emailed some comments to you just today or, or weekend. And they didn't make the packets because, um, Noreen didn't know about them. Other than we've got Mary's suggestion.
I think that's really the only change, is the sticker change.
The sticker, and there's one sentence in your, um...
Yeah, it was.
I happened to print it out the email.
Good, good.
I might have it here as well.
All right, it says, "Regarding the construction fence shall remain in place and shall be maintained during the entire construction phase, comma, up to the installation of the wetland buffer markers noted below." I thought we could change that sentence a little bit. "Construction fence shall remain in place and shall be maintained during the entire construction phase, even after the wetland markers are installed." Just in case the town does some interim public, uh, agreement where they allow the applicant to start working, and the markers aren't installed, or vice versa, the markers are installed and they're still doing some construction there, I want to be sure that the construction fence is still going to be up, even when the markers are up.
But what you don't have, though, is when, when you can have let them take it down.
Construction fence should be removed ultimately when the construction ceases.
Does that...
That's, yeah.
Seems to be logical to me. Does it need to be stated?
We don't want them to leave the site, the contractor, and leave it standing. It's just an eyesore.
Well, you said during the entire construction phase, so...
I, we can make it read correctly.
Yeah, no, I, I see your point.
Right.
That makes, makes sense.
And then I took to heart your point about making the wording, uh, limited, and, uh, there is a website where you can create your own sticker. So I plugged in some things, and Mike Donnelly just saw it today, so, uh...
Yeah, I mean, this looks fine.
It's nice and simple.
Very simple, that's what you want.
Did we find out if they're carcinite or carbonite?
Carcinite, I believe.
I believe it was carcinite, wasn't it?
Well, I've heard both used. I always used the word carcinite in my resolutions, but I...
I don't know if I took a note.
Carbonite crept in once.
Yeah, it's, it's a manufacturer's name, so...
Carcinite sounds like a manufacturer's name, and carbonite sounded like a chemical.
Yeah.
Carcinite is the, carcinite is the manufacturer.
Which we don't...
Which you want, because to be honest with you, once the, um, once the decal is created, it's going to be given a model number by carcinite. The current sticker is 7746-TOM. We're going to create a new sticker, which will have a new model number, and we're actually going to require that they purchase that sticker by model number.
Carcinite or equal, or...
I think we should sole source this because we're... We want uniformity, and we have a particular installation method. We want to have, we don't want to have different stickers from different manufacturers with different fonts. And we should have a standardized sticker, and beyond that, the, the markers are, I'm sure, a competitive price.
And then that was the only other thing, also in that email I sent to you. I thought we were going to say that the, the stickers or the decals were going to stay in the planning board office, and Noreen would keep a log as to who's coming in, and that's also in that email I sent to you.
Do you want the town to buy these stickers? Or do you want to have the manufacturer have a particular model, and they buy them?
The applicant buys them.
The applicant buys them. They'll get, they'll go on... Same as survey markers. We have a standard survey marker we require. Town doesn't buy a thousand of them, let them sit in a box. They go out and buy them as, you know, if they need 50 for the subdivision, they buy 50. But they buy the town's standard model. The same with this. They could buy a, you know, a local surveyor may want to buy 200 of them, or 100 of them, or 50 of them, whatever. They'll have them in stock. And then as far as the actual, uh, markers, th- their stock as well. They could buy them as they need them.
Does this need to address that, that fact that while they can, they'll be contacting the planning board secretary for the current sticker identification number?
I suspect once the model number is given, we'll update the policy to actually insert the, the model number.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, including a statement that, that the applicant is obligated to, um, purchase directly from, or...
Well, when we don't give them to them, they'll figure it out. It'll be the same as the survey markers. We tell them, you got to put them in, and when you give them the model number and the manufacturer, they go online and order them.
And how are we going to keep track of them? Because there was... Yeah, there is, um, suppose the property gets sold in the future, and r- right now we have on the sticker, you know, you're not supposed to remove them, but sometimes people say, you know, I'm mowing, and this is in my way, and they... Well, is there anything that Ben can do as far as...
I'm sure Ben is not going to be the marker police. He's got enough to do. I'm being very candid.
Can we put a recording required?
The bottom line is, uh, when the site plan is written off on as complete, one of the things that Ben or our office will look at, if there's 20 markers that are supposed to be installed, that the 20 markers have been installed, and we're requiring that they be staked out by a land surveyor, so we know they're in the correct location. Short of having that information available, Ben will likely not issue the CO.
Okay, that's the point. Ben will not issue.
It'll be a site, it'll be a site compliance issue. After the CO is issued, after the site's been occupied, if five years down the road, something happens to the markers, that's an enforcement issue that maybe the law can include.
Well, the only thing I was thinking of, of, could, well, I guess not. I was going to say, could the, the sticker have a section for, um, for a sticker number? That...
It's on the bottom of the current one.
You mean sequential numbers?
No, a sequential number, where Noreen can say, okay, applicant, these are your 20 numbers.
You're just making the cost go crazy because now they've got to print numerical stickers.
Right.
Just as a matter of technicality, does the town board or, or the planning board have to approve a sole source purchase?
We're not, well, that's the advantage of...
That's why...
We're not purchasing, purchasing them. We could do...
We could do Avery mailing labels and give a part number. You wouldn't violate any bidding rule.
Well, I mean, eh, look, what we've discussed is the applicant doing this versus the planning board, um... Well, we, look, we do, we do collect an escrow for what the wetland permit application. And it's pretty steep, actually. It's, uh, 2,500 per involved lot. You know, so, so out of that, you could use those funds for the planning board to purchase on the applicant's dime the stickers. Um, so they could monitor how many are issued and, and, and keep a record, and, and that would keep a record. But without doing it that way, I don't know how we really keep a record.
Well, right now, the highway department has the tool that's used, and they, they keep a log. So when the applicant's engineer comes in or a surveyor comes in, they say, okay. They're, they have a deposit fee, you know, while you're using the tool there.
I wouldn't even recommend that you use that approach because...
Right, but I'm just asking what, uh, what they're doing currently. And, uh, the highway department will keep a log saying that applicant ABC came in, and he has, um, five wetland markers installed. And then when he, like I said, they rented the tool, so once he brought the tool back, they gave him his deposit back.
So how...
But that, but that, that is how we currently know that there are wetland markers out there. Because you can go to the highway department, and Bob Pickinotti will run the...
Will that process change?
Well...
Process will change because now Ben, when he issues a CO on a site, has a site walk. We, with someone from our office, he's been out there on a regular basis. We've been out there on a regular basis. Part of the reason why we want to have inspection fees collected at the time of approval, so that we can work with Ben during the construction phase to monitor construction. Because wetland markers aren't the only thing. You've got curbs, you've got proper handicap space delineation, you've got drainage, you've got subsurface water quality treatment. All those things can't be reviewed at the end. You've got to have somebody review them during the course of construction. So this is one of many, many parts of the, of a site plan compliance. And back to the, to the issue of the town having the tools, I, I would, from a liability standpoint, recommend that you don't do that. If a tool happens to have some defect, and somebody slices their finger off, well, it was the town's tool that was defective. You know, you don't want to open the town up into that exposure. You know, we're setting a standard. We're telling the applicants that they need to hire a qualified person with the correct tools, using the correct markers, and have a licensed surveyor mark them out and get them in.
Mark's speaking with his village trustee hat on.
Yes.
Exactly. This is what I would do if it was my village. Because you don't want to expose the, the municipality to the liability. And there's so many other things on the site that they have to hire qualified people, that this is just one of many, many parts of the site plan development. And it's, it's the developer's obligation.
I'm okay with that. Well, I mean, look, I think where we're at, Ben, is, is it's a minor revision that you've asked for. Maybe you can work out the exact language with Mark, um, circulate the final, so that way at the next meeting, we can, we can kind of, um, resolve and, and, and accept this as, as a final version. Would there be the necessity of adding any language to our standard form resolution to address this?
Probably, yeah. I mean, I, I, I think we had been using something like install carcinite markers according to the town's, um, directive or resident, whatever. I think we can make specific reference to...
The policy passed it.
The policy adopted on such and such date, and then change that periodically if you're updated.
Yeah, and ultimately, the town board may roll this into a local law. They may have enforcement where a property owner has an obligation to maintain markers that have been stalled on an approved site plan, and if they fail to do so, it becomes a site plan violation. There may be a fine. That's a town board legislative action. At least we'll get the markers defined now.
Well, I suppose toward that end, um, when we resolve at the, hopefully the next meeting, that this is our policy until such time that the town board adopts actual, um, provisions in the code, that we remember, and, and two things that, that Mike should address, new language in the resolutions, and that we forward, um, the, the acceptable version to the town board in Bonny with the suggestion that they formally incorporate it into the code. And that in the interim, this is what we'll be doing.
And we'll share it with applicants so they can include it on their plans.
And then we get our website exposed.
Maybe confusing here, is this says wetland area, but this is the limit set of buffer.
Yeah, that was a good point from the last meeting. I think we have to be real clear that we mean buffer every place.
But if you say wet, see, that was kind of, um, I was looking online, and wetlands area seems to be a little bit more lenient, and instead of saying a wetland, you could have zone, you could say wetlands, um, so...
It's not really the wetland area, it's a wetland buffer area. But people will take it more seriously if it says wetland area, I think.
I, I agree with you.
If you say buffer, then I think they, they think they have space.
Right.
I don't know. I agree with you, it is, it is a little misleading.
And a wetland area can also have a buffer, so if it's a wetland area...
Your wetland regulation controls the buffer, so you're...
We're not being misleading.
You're delineating the limits of what's covered by your wetland regulations.
I like that argument.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay. All right.
All right, so Mark will work on the revision. All right, so Mark will work on the revision in one or two sections.
I'll work with Mary, we'll get it, we'll get it straightened out.
And we'll get it straightened out for the next meeting.
Okay, I just want to take a note because I want to make sure that we remember the, um, and I just lost. I don't want to hold you guys up. What's, uh, what's on there?
I don't know if Noreen noticed, but the contact number is her home number.
Yeah.
On the market.
That was a good one, Mary, I liked that.
We snuck it in.
I do it, no, I didn't, what?
I'm kidding.
Didn't notice that. Um, all right, send to Bonnie in Board, revise resolution, template. Okay. Uh, was there something else? Send to Bonnie in Board, or, or no, I think that was it. All right, I'll just save that. Okay, continuing education, Noreen, did, I don't see the, where is it?
I forgot.
Okay, that stinks.
Yes, it does.
All right, so, um, I might have it in my email. Let me just save this. Okay. Um, okay. Let's see. I emailed it to you, right, Noreen?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the county giving us the fall classes?
Hmm?
Is the county doing fall classes?
Oh, I don't...
All day.
I think they, yes, they, I think they always do. But I just wanted to review, um, we have members that need to get their credits done. Um, and so we have a chart that shows who needs to get what done. And I need everyone to review it to make sure they feel it's accurate and get back to me if they feel it's not. But unfortunately, since we don't have the chart, I don't know how we could do that. Um, so that's going to be difficult. Um, and it's kind of important because it's September and some of you, what, if you recall, let me wind back since I can't find the chart. I had asked the town board to, um, sort of reset the requirements for certain members that were way out of compliance, let's just say. Not all. Certain members were, were fine and actually have extra credits and they roll forward. And, and so for those people, they still get the benefit all those prior years, but there were certain members who were, were not up to speed. And so the town board agreed to allow them to sort of reset. And I believe it was as of 2016. Those members, however, now still have to get more credits. So, um, I guess what we'll, we'll do, and I'm not doing, we were not doing this on a calendar year, by the way. I thought that that was not fair, so how I presented it to the board was, since everyone was, you know, sort of, their anniversary dates were different, I'm doing it based on their anniversary dates. So everyone gets the benefit of, of that and doesn't, not everyone has to complete their credits by December. So what we'll do is I'll have Noreen email all of you the chart so that way you can review it. I know that I am missing, I think I'm missing, you took a course. I don't know that I ever got the certificate. Or maybe Noreen did, but if you have it, that'd be great, get it to her.
I told her.
Yes, I, I have written down because I knew you were taking it and so I had written down he's taking this. I think I got yours. So she'll circulate it, please look at it because some of you are running out of time and need to get it done. And if you need some leads on free education, I do have it in my budget that you can take courses. If you find something that's interesting and that it needs to, it's not a free course, I have some money in the budget, but there are quite a few free courses, particularly through Orange County Planning, that are pretty good. All right, the gardens at Harriman Station. Everyone's got the scoping document. I believe I told you guys about this. I had, I guess when I went to a, a planning meeting at the county, they had mentioned this project to me. So this is the one, so it's called Gardens at Harriman Station. You have the scoping document. Um, I, I guess it is final, it seems to have been adopted. This is the property that borders north of the train station, all the way up the thruway. I'm not sure where exactly it ends, um, you know, how far it goes. So I would, I would urge you to take a look at it. And Mike, what is, what is our role given that, that...
You're an interested agency, you don't have any approval authority.
That's it. Right.
You're entitled, as you did, to ask to be copied on all secret documents and that's what they're doing, copying.
I did ask for that, didn't I?
Yes, in writing, and that's why they're doing it, yeah.
That's why, I, I can't remember, did I say that?
Yes, you did.
This is before making.
Yeah, it was before, Noreen, yeah.
Really, was it?
Yeah, you had written a letter and said as an interested agency.
You remember that, huh?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of things I don't remember, but I do. This is the one...
I think it's on the education.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my recollection, and it's not a great one, as you guys know, I'm terrible with that. Um, you know, this is quite, quite the big project. It's, it's residential, it's commercial, it's sort of as presented as, my, my recollection is sort of a self-contained kind of community. And we'll really change the landscape over there.
You know, I was thinking, you wrote the letter on the, on the KJ one, I don't know about this one.
I wrote, I wrote BMG. I don't know that I wrote it.
If you did on this one, I forget then, I could be wrong.
Should I be doing that now?
If they're copying us, probably don't need to.
They are, but this is after the fact. This is, the scoping document's already been finalized and adopted.
It went to the town.
And, oh yeah, and it didn't go to us, it came to the town.
It went to the town and they gave me a copy.
You can certainly ask as an interested agency to be provided with copies. I don't know that they want to have to send two copies all the time, but you're a separate agency from the town board, so you can afford to do it.
Had I done that beforehand? I assume they had a public hearing on this scoping.
Public hearing is, is optional on scoping.
Yeah, but if...
Public input is required, but you don't necessarily have to have a public hearing.
I would think they would have, just because it's such, it's such a big project.
It is a big project.
But what I'm saying is, had I sent the letter earlier and they were having a public hearing, would they then have...
No, because I think, well, yeah, the public hearing notice would be a secret document, you'd be entitled to receive a copy of it.
Right. So I think that it's important that we do send that, that request.
Okay.
As an interested agency, so that way in the future, public hearings that we're, we're at least told about.
You can read, you can do the same letter you did on the KJ.
Yes. So look for the one that I did for, I call it BMG because I can't say it.
You can.
Okay, so, so look in that file because you'll find the other one. And if you can't find it, please let me know and I'll, I'll send you the one we sent. All right. Okay. All right. And for the public out there, be aware, the project's out there. So I'm sure there's going to be lots of, lots of discussion of it in the Village of Woodbury Planning Board. So particularly for Harriman residents, you want to take note of that and get involved. All right, anything else? Uh, no, there's nothing, oh. It's 9:20. Does anyone take five minutes to read these minutes?
Okay.
Yeah? And maybe you can bang them out? Okay, great. Uh, we're going to go off the record. All right, we're back on the record. Um, we've got the June six minutes. Everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Um, Anthony, do you have any changes?
No, I, I think it looks good.
Okay. Uh, Gary, do you have anything?
I'm happy with them.
Okay, Mary?
I have a few little tweaks.
Yep. What do you got?
Uh, page three, uh, one, two, third paragraph talks about Ligger Brugge, where you see LBG diagrams.
Where, wait, wait, page three, one's...
Page three, it's like the third paragraph.
Mr. Edsall advised.
Third paragraph, Mr. Edsall advised.
Oh, paragraph right above that.
Okay.
All right. Um, the next, the last sentence, they incorporated one of the Ligger Brugge diagram schematics. Well, now you've got two things listed. You've got a diagram and you've got a schematic and you've got the word one.
Yep.
So maybe you should take the word one out and say, they incorporated the Ligger Brugge diagram schematic for the water and the wells.
I'm not sure if we're discussing two things there or one thing.
Well, that's why I said, take out the word one.
Yeah, just in case.
And, yeah.
So they incorporated the LBG diagrams.
Schematics.
Maybe even slash schematics.
Schematics.
Okay. Let's do that.
Okay, just to make it seem a little clearer.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's part of the item itself. And look, and should there be a comma after schematics? Diagram schematics for the water?
It probably doesn't need a comma after schematics.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Right.
You've got to think it out.
All right, so you go...
Now, Mary suggested maybe a, a slash or a hyphen.
Between diagram and schematics, a slash.
Right.
Yeah. Because we weren't sure exactly what he...
Yeah.
Mark knows exactly what it is, but he's left.
Interesting.
Yeah. Uh, then you go down, one, two, another three, a third paragraph down. Mr. Edsall noted that note number six on the plans needs to be reviewed to make sure no further changes are needed. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, that, that was the correct number because you, again, you have a very specific number here, it's number six.
Uh, that I'm pretty sure.
So as long, okay.
Number six, VPA.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so if we know that number's correct. Okay, uh, going down, you've got Army Core, like an apple core, C-O-R-E.
Where are we? Oh, yeah, it's a corp, C-O-P, C-O-R-P.
C-O-R-P. And that, that's three times, I've got it circled.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't even pick up on that one, thank you.
Yeah. So there might be...
Is it an apple?
Nope.
They're not an apple, they may be.
I don't think so.
So I, I found three, there might be another one.
Do a global.
Yes, do a global search. Uh, page four, um, you talked about building, building one, I, I think it would be better to say Glenwood two and Glenwood one because there are other buildings on that property, whether it's a shed or something. I just wanted to be sure that they understand the water is coming from Glenwood one.
Glenwood.
Okay, so you're facing...
At the very top?
Yeah.
It should say Glenwood.
That, that should say Glenwood two and then, uh, Glenwood, I want...
Glenwood two will be fed from Glenwood one.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, so that would just clarify it a little bit. The next paragraph, Orange County Planning, I think the C in county should be capitalized because it's like a, a name, it's not just the county. Going down to the last paragraph, um, it starts with, Mr. Nugent told Chairperson Schwartz. Well, Mr. Nugent wasn't here at the meeting, so I think it should read Chairperson Schwartz stated that Mr. Nugent...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, we start off the paragraph, the Chairperson Schwartz reported, just use that same language.
Yeah, Chairperson Schwartz reported.
So Chairperson Schwartz reported that Mr. Nugent told her. Good.
Uh, page five. It's a little bit past the middle, no more than the allowed 30 percent.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty percent of what? Thirty percent of the building, 30 percent of the lot size, 30 percent?
Of the home.
Uh, yeah, here it just says no more than the allowed 30 percent.
I don't know if it was the square footage of the home.
Yeah, so I think, again, that just would help clarify it.
Yeah, you better clarify that, I'm not sure. I think it's 30 percent of the square...
Total square footage.
Total square footage of the home, but I'm not positive, so, uh...
And...
It may be that we didn't specify when I said it.
That...
And then we're going to have to keep it vague because I wasn't clear.
Okay.
I'll check it on the video.
And those would be my only comments.
Okay. All right, Lisa, you got anything?
I don't, I don't know. On page one, the last sentence.
Page one, the last sentence.
Uh-huh. Says built, uh, the building was built in 1960, but I think on the narrative, it said it was built in 1963, so...
We can check it, if, if, see what, what he reported. If he said it was 1960, you have to keep it that way.
Okay.
That's all. All right, so check that, Noreen.